I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, January 25th, 2017, meeting of the Fairhaven School Committee. Mind everyone that we are being filmed for public access. Please rise for the President.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited in justice or error.
We'll call Mr. McCallum.
Here.
Ms. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Breen.
Here.
I am here. Mrs. Keachler is out with prior notice and Mrs. McKenna is ill. She's not joining us, but we have a quorum, so we are good to go. Visitors, Dr. Baldwin, I don't believe there's anyone in the audience.
We're ready to rock and roll.
Yeah, we're ready to go.
Ready to go.
We all got our minutes from the last meeting. Assuming everyone had a chance to review, so can I have a motion to approve the minutes of January 11th, 2017, regular session?
So, a moment.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We do not have anyone for public comments since there is nobody here. So, if we move on to the report of the Student Advisory Committee.
Thank you. I don't have a lot, but I'd like to mention that last week on the eighteenth, Bethany Fernandes, who graduated last year from Fairhaven High, received her National Student Production Trophy for her video essay.
Awesome.
That's awesome.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Well, actually, so she's moved on to college now, right? So, can't wish her congratulations, but... So now we move on to reports and recommendations of the superintendent. Receive two thousand sixteen annual report.
Mr. Chair, actually, in the annual report is information about Bethany Fernandes and the three nominations for the National Emmy. One of a number of accomplishments that is given to you as a draft. We will make any adjustments, which we are made aware of and we have been. So, thank you for your diligence and then submit it to the town in its final form. But it's just a series of accomplishments that take place throughout the year, whether they've come forth through different meetings, graduation time, and we just kind of try and share that with the town. That is the submission that goes into the town report that everyone gets on the day of town meeting. So, it's been submitted as a draft. We do have time if we had to make any edits and then it goes to the town for reporting.
Does anybody have any questions or comments for Dr. Baldwin?
No.
All right. Had the opportunity to look through it and it was great news as usual, so thank you. And then the next one is receive update regarding district and school leadership.
So, this, I'm just going to kind of walk the committee through. It was given to you based on accomplishing District Improvement Plan Goal Number Six. So, what I did was I gave you the overall set of the goals and then that was followed by a description of district leadership and operations. And then there was a menu of key actions that said we were going to take all of the menu items, the roles and responsibilities, which were over three pages long in kind of categories, and take all of these roles and responsibilities and duties. And the key was to develop a long-term, and I'll read to you the goal, develop and implement a long-term, sustainable district and school leadership operations plan that provides the support and resources to expand and enhance powerful teaching and learning. So, it's all about powerful teaching and learning. What were we going to do? We knew that we were in transition. What were we going to do to formalize this plan? So, the idea to accomplish this is, in a nutshell, presented to you in the organizational chart. And we will get in the calendar portion that our audit is coming up from the Department of Ed. One of the components that they wanted was a current organizational chart. And this, ours has kind of been in flux and in process. And I believe that this now provides for us the ability to have the resources in place to service and support the schools and their buildings, et cetera. So, just in brief, there's a lot of narrative behind there and you'll also see that under facilities and maintenance, the accomplishments, what was said about us prior, what was highlighted in facilities and maintenance, and now how are we going to sustain them? So, it starts with the Office of the Superintendent of Schools. That consists of a superintendent of schools and tomorrow, and I will be asking some school committee members to serve as a member of the committee. Starting tomorrow, we will post, and again, this is all for FY 2018. This is all to begin July 1st of 2017. This is, we have done things on an interim basis, but we want to formalize in a long-term, sustainable basis. The Office of the Superintendent of Schools will consist of a superintendent of schools, in which we've now updated job descriptions, and assistant superintendent of schools, in which we've updated job descriptions. And we will also have that encompass a Director of Technology and Finance, which will also be a certified business manager through the state. So, we will have all those bases covered. You see that that Office of the Superintendent of Schools will overarching work in concert with the Administrative Council. Our Administrative Council is our traditional term for our building principals and our Director of Student Services. And while the Office of the Superintendent and the Administrative Council are responsible for all of the operations of the entire schools and the district, a lot of what the Office of the Superintendent has started to take on was that operational system side, finance, facilities, and maintenance. And you know, in the past, we had support systems of a business office manager and facilities manager. So, you now have a sustained, long-term system that can not only move in the direction to make sure that the operational systems and all of those menu items are being taken care of by this group, but also on the educational program side. And we're having a review that's coming up and you have in front of you an excerpt from the last review from 2011, page twenty-eight, that has been telling the Fairhaven Public Schools that we should consider replacing the current design, which has principals and others sharing responsibility for articulating and coordinating curriculum instruction assessment with a centralized model of oversight. The hiring and posting of the assistant superintendent of schools takes the traditional superintendent, business manager, sped director model and now says that the assistant superintendent will be able to fulfill those roles and duties also. So, instead of it being more of a operations-based, it's more of an educational program-based position. And so, the leadership and organization and structure will have these positions, most of which are nothing more than restructuring of positions that were here a year ago. They are part of the budget proposal that was presented to you at the last meeting. And we feel pretty excited about this. We have an amazing team on the Administrative Council. And regarding the Office of the Superintendent of Schools, we believe that we have all of the bases covered. So, if there are any questions, please fire away.
Anybody have any questions for Dr. Baldwin on the District and School Leadership?
Not right now. So, for the most part, all these people exist now. Hiring one, hiring two, and some?
So, great question. We will formally post. We will go through the process. We will see if people that we have currently meet the criteria. A position such as an assistant superintendent has to be officially approved by the school committee. So, that's why I said I'll be listening, some support for that. We'll see what we get for anything internal. What this does is while the question may be, well, do people exist? This also helps the district to sustain and long-term have the positions in place when people transition. We have now a system that says, do you have a superintendent, assistant superintendent, someone in charge of finance, someone in charge of facilities and maintenance? How is your educational program overseen? This organizational chart, which is so dependent on highly skilled people, is not dependent, it's position-based too. So, it covers us long-term, sustainable, that if a position, it's not so dependent that this person does such a great job and they do fourteen different things, but if that person isn't there, who knows those fourteen things? Now, all of those duties that were presented and the roles and responsibilities have coverage by a role and responsibility in one of those positions. Do I believe that there are internal people that may choose or not choose to put their name in? I believe that we have fostered the next generation of leadership in this district and I believe that there are a number of people, whether they choose to apply or not, we will see. And then if they do choose to apply, will that create vacancies in which we are then posting for other positions? The time is now to start.
Anybody else have any questions? My only question on this was, the org chart is more functional by nature than actual position necessarily. So, I think what would, yeah, so when I first looked at it, it was, I was confused because things like the assistant superintendent weren't on here, the Director of Tech and Finance were not on here. So, when I saw, for instance, at the bottom, the Business Office Manager and the Facilities Manager, I would, I thought we would see that, you know, they report up through the Director of Tech and Finance. I think that's the structure that we're, that's happening there. So, it might be, you know, for, I don't know, for the next meeting or for, you know, future updates, that it'd be good to have not just the functional, but the actual, you know? So, you know, input, you know, names to, I know we have interns now. We know who they are. But this may not be something, this may not be a bad thing to actually, when it's finalized, to, well, it is finalized, but to post on the actual site of your administration so people can see who they are, what the new structure looks like. Because I haven't looked on the site recently, but how does that, and not having looked, I mean, I know I'm kind of putting you on the spot, but, you know, before when you went to administration, it would say, "Mr. Kitchen, Business Manager." But now, that's not the case anymore. So, I'm wondering if, I don't really, it doesn't matter what it says now, but I'm wondering if this would be something nice, once it's finalized, to put there and say, "These are the different levels." And if you have a question about school finance, this is the person you call, you know? Or facilities, this is the person you call. You know, and then, you know, see who is on the Administrative Council, that kind of stuff.
I think it's absolutely not just a great idea, it's a necessity. And not even just for people going to the website, our own people in the district, faculty and staff. And we knew, we knew that we were in a year of flux. So, that's why you have interim positions and tentative this and tentative that. Now, it's taking us now to get ready so that we will have this lean mean machine that's ready to roll out next year with names, with direct reports, who reports to whom. We kind of had to have it flush out too, to see how it all, what did we really need? What were the capabilities? And so, I think it's a great necessity, not just an idea, to do that. And then people can know that, you know, if I have an issue, also, we know when people call. Above this should be the school department. When people call, the school committee should be able to say, "If you've got a problem with transportation, please contact Mike." If you have a problem with, sorry, Ms. Tavares. And she's done an amazing job with that and taken that issue off the line. It's just been one A. But that's how we had to do it. We've had to do it by who are the best talents at taking on certain issues and doing it that way. So, I totally agree with that. So, then if somebody had an issue with food services, who do you call? Somebody has an issue with an ed plan, who do you call? And ideally, people want to call their principal and their classroom teacher because that's what's most comfortable.
Right.
But maybe they don't agree with the teacher or the principal. Well, then who do you call?
Right. And so, that's, yeah, and if you, yeah, you could even put, yeah.
Right. So, we're on the same wavelength. We just got to get the people now in the spots. And I think I'll have them all here one night and say, "Okay, this is the pecking order here. Here's your, here's your assistant superintendent, here's your..." So, right now, these are interim. We will start by formally posting the assistant superintendent and then move from there. And by July 1st, we should be completed and ready to roll out.
Okay. Excellent. Anything else? Thank you, Dr. Baldwin. Moving on, so receive update regarding capital planning process.
I just wanted to share with you, I know there was a question last meeting, and we are rooting for our projects to be at the top of the list in the capital planning process. So is each and every department. So, every department submitted their plans. In the past, when we had past leadership, it was very subjective and political. And we were very fortunate in that. So, we, we had floors that were done. The middle school has received a lot of work. We've had, been proactive. And you can see the facilities and maintenance breakdown in that leadership piece. There's been phenomenal work done through Mr. Kitchen, just phenomenal work done through him. This process now takes the submission that we put forth and says, "Okay, objectively, how do we put a weight to each proposal by each department and then how do they score?" It's really fair. So, I sat around at a capital planning meeting and I didn't sit around. We sat as a committee and we literally went through each and every proposal, read the proposals prior, and then sat down and said, "Fire Department, Priority Number One", and read Priority Number One of the Fire Department and said, "Criteria A, should it, is it a project that requires less than ten percent town funding? No. Is it a project that requires less than fifty percent town funding? Yes." And gave each and every project a score. So, objectively now, you take the subjectivity, the politics out and based on the way the projects were presented and their face value, each project now has a score and you did the score not based on dollars. Because if you did it based on dollars, you'd be subjective all of a sudden. So, you did it based on the criteria. Now, it's in the hands of the town administrator to not only rank them based on the objectivity, but also now say, "What's fourth?" So, it's a great process. I wanted to share with you the tool and I'm going to tell you that we're going to use that tool with one-time, one-time facility projects in our district. We are going to have a list of menu items that may need to be done and then we are going to tweak this tool a bit, but we're going to make them objective as opposed to you walked in the door at the right day and this happened. That's fantastic, but maybe there's something that is a health and safety issue that needs to be remedied right away. So, we're going to actually take this tool and utilize it ourselves when we deal with maintenance projects within the district. But I just wanted to share with you because you had asked at one of the last meetings, where do we fall on the list? I'll find out at the next capital planning meeting where our projects fall. I've also learned now, by putting it ranked one, two, three, or four, it gets a different score. By being able to say that we might have MSBA funding could get it to be less than fifty percent and get it a higher rating. So, by doing work upfront, we may very well be able to enhance our score in the future when we submit. So, I wanted to just share with you. I was very impressed with it and it was a great process.
Does anybody have any questions?
So, Dr. Baldwin, this is a current tool that the town of Fairhaven is using.
Yes.
You had meant, made a comment that we will tweak the tool. Who's "we"?
We, the school district, are going to take this tool and tweak it to our school district. So, for example, it may not be as, you know, fifty percent town funding. Well, that doesn't pertain to us.
Okay.
But we may say, heating in the Fairhaven High School library. And say, and here's how we would also tweak it. Is the issue an educational issue? Is it initially buying textbooks? Should that, should educational issues get a higher score? So, internally, we're going to take this tool and say, if we have an opportunity to get something through budget, should we now look at this and make our own set of criteria?
Sure.
That, and we probably won't tweak it much because I think it's pretty good. But, you know, fifty percent of town funding doesn't pertain to us. Is this a health and safety issue? I don't know, I'm pretty cold here. But will it, will it save in the long run by fixing the situation in this building? Yes. Because right now, this building is on all weekend. So, it's warming up in this library on Monday morning. That's not good. So, fiscally, it would rise to the top of projects to be done in this district on our own accord through either the trust or what have you. Because, so that's how we're going to do it.
Okay, gotcha. So, it's like a capital FMEA. Gotcha.
Yes.
Exactly.
Yes.
Just curious, so, in this process, and you may have said it, but I was reading the document, so I may not have heard it. Are, are you in on the scoring?
Yes.
Okay. So, my question is, has the scoring been done?
Yes.
Okay.
I took all the results.
So, are, so for the prior phases, because we have started some work in this building, in this building, we, I'm hoping we're not at zero for prior phases.
I don't, I don't know. It's not right for me to address how the score because it was collective.
Yeah.
I will tell you that the head of BPW, a business owner in town, Wendy Graves, the treasurer, the chair, Mr. Tillot, myself, Mr. Roth, sat around just like this committee would sit around and came to consensus.
Okay.
So, it wasn't, but I will tell you that something that's ongoing doesn't mean you started, started work on a, on the high school in general. It means you started a road and you didn't finish the road. It doesn't mean we started work on the high school, so it's...
Well, we started, we did some windows, right? Some of the windows are pre-letted.
It wouldn't be qualified, to be quite honest.
It wouldn't have, no?
It's not.
So, we're starting at zero with that?
We started at zero. Had we, had, do, if, if our seven point three million dollar high school project gets started in year one, now that's a phase project.
Then we move up to number one.
Right. But, so, so you, you know, if it's a four-year plan to work on the digester, well, then the second year is the second year of a four-year plan, but they did the first year plan. So, it's not that we started work on a certain facility. That's a singular project. So, just to try and clarify there.
Yeah, okay.
But it was, I thought it was very fair. And yes, I had to sit around and listen to the collective consensus on a school issue, as did Mr. Fertato on a BPW issue, as did anyone, you know, Mr. Roth on a planning issue. And everybody came to consensus. You would have been proud of the objectivity of the people in the group. And whatever, I feel very comfortable, however it's ranked, it was fair.
It was fair.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? No, I think this is, this would be very good to apply to the internal budgetary decisions for the schools because, I mean, while we did many great projects last summer, I, you know, I think even you would agree that we maybe bit off a little bit more than we should have. You know, because some of the projects ran into the school year and a lot of great things were done, but it was a lot. And maybe if, you know, objectivity and different processes were applied, you could, you know, push something out if it wasn't necessarily required to be done rather than just have this big list to burn down. You know, and these are the kinds of things that we do, you know, in projects. It's like that in, you know, in my line of work where we wait things and that's how we make decisions. So, it takes the, you know, the wants or the, I don't remember the politics, but yeah.
It's pretty real.
Yeah.
Yeah, this school gets it and that school doesn't. You hear that all the time, once you have an objective process.
Yeah. You can't argue with the score because the score is the score, the facts are the facts and the numbers are what they are. So, I think that's, that's great. Thank you. All right. And we are cruising. So, our next school, discussion of upcoming events, our next school committee meeting is February 8th, 17. I can't believe that we are already going to be entering February. This year is flying already. And that's it. We have no unfinished business?
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes, sir.
I have two calendar issues.
Oh, sure, go for it.
For I'm in. One is to give the committee a heads up that this audit, the granddaddy of all audits by the Department of Ed, which happened with us about eleven years ago, Ms. Tavares and I fondly remember it, that we walked through the door and were told to get together all kinds of information. We now have this comprehensive district audit and they are going to meet with town officials to discuss financial and asset management on Tuesday, February 14th, from 1:00 to 2:30 p.m. at the Ad Center. I will extend that invitation to town officials and who has to be. They also want to meet with the school committee. And it cannot be a quorum in any one room, but they may have two different focus groups going on. So, I wanted to prepare you that Wednesday, February 15th, from 4:30 to 5:30 is a time period at which they would be available. So, I wanted to forewarn you that if you can, we would love to have groups and we will probably, you know, ask obviously the chair and the vice chair, but I want everyone to be prepared. It would be at the Ad Center, February 15th, from 4:30 to 5:30. Be on call, as you won't be on call that day. We'll let you know well in advance, but I wanted to at least let you know today that that is our time and date for the school committee to be interviewed. And the second one goes along with the school.
Please follow me, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So, we cannot have a quorum though on that date?
You cannot have a quorum in the same room. So, maybe they're going to have two different, but you cannot have a quorum.
So, three, two, yeah.
Yes.
All right.
The other, Mr. Chair, is regarding the committee meeting dates that are given to you in July. And I just wanted to point out that we're fine in February. However, the fourth Wednesday is probably during vacation week, so we pushed it to March 1st. And I just wanted to talk to you about whether or not we do three meetings in March. We did it for that purpose. I think it's important that we have the February 8th meetings. However, just food for thought, we have meetings planned for March 1st, March 15th, and March 29th. And I just bring it to the committee in advance that it may not be a need to have three meetings in the month of March. We did that based on school vacation in February and trying to get proximity, but it may not be something that we have, that I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Sure. So, maybe it strikes the 15th.
So, the question, sorry, Mr. McCallum.
I just jump into the end. So, the three meetings in March, maybe, maybe strike the 15th.
Sure. But then the question would become, when would we, when would we have our public hearing for our budget? We had that, I believe, in March last year, right?
And that was the point.
So, it was either, I mean, it would have to be either March 1st or March 29th. I just don't want to have it so late that it's, you know, I mean, you do these things for a purpose. You want people to have public input on your budget. And if there is some driving force where we have three hundred people here show up for some reason, then you want to be able to address, you know, their needs. So, I mean, if, when, when would be an appropriate date to have that hearing?
So, there's a couple of things. During the month of March, I think we need to look at when the candidates' nights are because we always run into, we always run into conflict with that every year. And we end up talking about, so, I just food for thought and it's early, it's still January. The other point is, we traditionally used to have our budget, open budget hearing in April and a year or two ago, we went back to March. So, I think March is okay. You have to judge whether or not March 29th is okay. But as I said, past practice has been in April to have the budget hearing because you're then close to, you have a better idea with the data, where it's at. You've been through all the other meetings. My quick opinion is March 29th is not a bad time to have the open hearing.
No, I disagree. The only reason why is because the West Island event is usually the Wednesday prior to the election.
Okay.
And that will probably be March 29th. Yeah. I think, I think, right, I think, I mean, I think I'm more leaning towards having it March 1st. Is that too early? And then, I think, I think we should, I think, you know, scrap the 15th meeting and then we'd have to move the 29th to a Tuesday. But we don't even know those dates yet, but it's typically would be that Wednesday if we had to move that meeting anyway. So, that's why I'm saying if we do it on the, if we, 29th is probably a bad date unless we did our meeting on the Tuesday. But I think maybe we should take this discussion, you know, between, you know, you and Mrs. Keachler.
It's fine. We have plenty of time. I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Yeah, we table it.
And we'll table it for now and we'll have to figure out what the schedule for March is going to be and then go from there.
Okay. So, I will handle it with the chair, but I just want you to have enough advance that we can stick to it, but there's three meetings.
Yeah, and it's not pointing.
Okay.
Because, I mean, inevitably, there's going to be another candidate tonight that probably is going to lie on the 15th and we're going to have a conflict anyway. So, if I get to those candidates. All right. Anybody else have any other questions on the calendar? Okay. Dr. Baldwin, is there any other current events that were coming up?
No. No.
We have no unfinished business and so we move new business. We need to vote to surplus technology equipment.
So, Mr. Chair, this is commonplace, that when we have phased out or dated technology equipment, quite often, we will declare surplus and give to a certain group, and the Share Foundation, which we're soliciting to Mr. Perry at East River Haven, is, it seems to be very worthwhile, and it makes sense to take the information and the surplus inventory that are dated right now, give them to this society for advancement through engineering and the Share Foundation, and let them disperse this technology accordingly. So it's just a vote to surplus it, and then surplus it to this entity. Quite often in the past with books, we've surplused books to a certain entity that then makes sure that the books get to other countries. This is the same kind of idea with technology, where they will make sure that the technology gets into the hands of those who can use it.
Does anybody have any questions, Mr. McRae?
The hard drives will get wiped.
Yes.
Anybody else have questions?
No.
All right, so is there any specific motion, or is it?
Motion surplus.
Yeah.
Is that, is that all? So can I have a, so I have a motion on the floor to surplus the technology equipment? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Ernie, so I'm going to move on to questions from individual committee members.
Did MJ talk to you about people coming here tonight to talk to us?
No.
They're bringing MJ at the game last night, and they're mad, so that she's coming here to do something.
Yes, for the, I call them the basement, all of the kids in the, all the kids who do all the programs with creative imaging and.
Sometimes with graduation or something?
Yeah.
They are coming on the 8th.
Okay.
Which, it's going to be a great meeting on the 8th. It'll be your annual event to just hear what's updated, and it's just, it's made a profound difference in some kids' lives, and pointed them in directions that they never knew they'd be pointed in. So the next meeting, they'll be here, yes.
Anything else, Mr. McRae?
I have a couple of things. One, this morning, Dr. Baldwin and I were lucky enough to participate in the kindness tunnel at East River Haven School, which will happen at Wood School tomorrow, and they having, they're having whole kindness week, and they were, we stood with, with some policemen, firemen, selectmen, other town officials, and high-fived all the kids as they came in. And there were some surprised, some shy, some psyched, some, and they were all in their crazy for kindness outfits, and it was, it was uplifting, and I went to work with a smile on my face, so. I know a lot of the policemen really enjoyed doing that, and the fire chief was there too. So I think it was a lot of, it was a lot of fun. Kids really enjoyed it, so just very happy and thankful to be part of that. The other, the other question I had, somebody mentioned it to me the other day, asked about our testing in Massachusetts, and I said, gee, I don't know where things stand with MCAS 2.0, and I was wondering if Dr. Baldwin had any insight.
I do.
How about that?
I don't know tonight, but I, being as a member of the executive committee with the Mass Association of School Superintendents, there's a gentleman who is on the board and forwarded that committee a number of, number of pieces of information. I'd be more than happy to bring it to the next meeting. If you want it as an agenda item, I can do that, if not, I can forward it to members, but it's the latest hot off the press of where they are in timelines and so forth.
I'd like to take an asset.
That'd be great.
Sure. They are also, we authored, we, the Mass Association of School Superintendents authored, and I'll, I'll add that in, on looking at an accountability reset. And we've been talking about that, but specifically us, about four different platforms of an assessment. And then while we transition this year into what may be into the future, why not reset the accountability and how it looks? We basically said over and over again that it's not help harmless, it's harm deferred. And people at Desi are hearing that. They're understanding that, yes, it makes sense that everybody's doing, people caught on and said, we're not going to go computer-based, we're going to stay MCAS paper-based, and we're going to outscore the people for a while. And those that stuck their necks out and went computer-based and park are the ones who are getting hurt, us. And so why should districts get hurt at this point in time until everybody gets their act together? And then we just reset the accountability and go from there. Nobody's saying we take accountability away, we're just saying, let's have accountability, be fair, once we're all playing from the same set of rules. So I can present that too at the next meeting. I will go into a lot of detail, but I'll have a live meeting for you ahead of time, and then, you know, give you a little bit of an update, and then you can ask me any questions. So, right on.
Thank you, Mr. McRae.
It's not my point in the agenda, but I just have to point out, you have the detailed portion of the annual report in the district leadership and operations, and I cannot publicly thank enough the job that Mr. Kitchen did through the years. If you look at what we were, facilities and maintenance, and it's now a momentum that's continuing. So when you, when you work somewhere and you build something, you hope it sustains, you hope it doesn't go away when you go away, that's not the case. You can see what we're doing with capital planning, but take a look at the details of what was accomplished in facilities and maintenance from 2005 through the present, it's staggering, and that's a credit to Paul Kitchen. And I just, you know, it's not my part of the agenda, but in reading this and putting this together, I was awestruck at the work that he did, the job that he did, and the legacy that he left is that we're continuing this. You know, it's not dependent upon a person, and that's what the leadership model too, is that it's not dependent upon a person, it's a leadership model that will sustain itself for years and years to come. And so I just wanted to publicly give him a shout-out for the job that he did for us.
Job descriptions for all these new roles that are coming or exist?
I believe, did we, I believe we did superintendent, which you never had one, for me for a dozen years.
Assistant.
And the assistant, we did it. And then we will go in, so the first thing we'll do is get those people on board, and then those people will start working on the next, which will be, and it'll be very easy, director of technology and finance, and then most of the others, we've done business office manager, we've done facility manager, we've done student services, assistant director of student services, I think probably those are the last two.
Also, I think they're a draft form, something like that, I think they've been presented to the school.
Okay, perfect, so why don't we?
I'll double check.
Perfect. And, and I will probably, this office will be reaching out initially to the chair, the vice chair, but others will be prepared, that we're going to be posting the initial position, and then once we post it, we'll be asking, because officially, my goal would be by the 8th, unless we post out, which we can do, by the 8th, we may be able to start setting that in motion of appointing. And again, all of these are appointed as of July 1st, so this is not tomorrow. We have our interns in place, July 1st, we would set this up to move forward from there.
With that, we do not need to go into executive session tonight, so can I have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.